Good evening and welcome to the February 27, 2024 combined rescheduled work session of the regular meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown. I represent the Riverbend Township and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well. I would like to welcome our viewers and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television live streaming audience, I would like to present your Gaston County Commissioner, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of the Township.
Good evening. I'm Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Kloniger, Dallas Township.
Kim Johnson, Gastonia Township.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna go all the way down through that way. If you don't mind that way, because Dr. Eagle can go since you're brand new. Want to get you all ready to roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Dewey, County Attorney.
And I'm Kim Eagle, County Commissioner.
It's funny how you had to look and see who you were, right? Thank you guys for that. Next will be the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. I'll now ask Commissioner Hovis to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Johnson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You please stand.
If you will, please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you today with your grace. We come to you with understanding and love for our fellow citizens. Father, help us to be leaders in our community. Help us to meet the community's long-term needs and help us to move Gaston County forward. Your bountiful grace and knowledge will allow us to do that. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The February work session is now called to order. I'll now ask for proclamations, commendations, award and certificate. I'll now ask Commissioner Keger if he would go down to the dice to proclaim the month of February 2024 as American Heart Month.
We've got some folks that are here to accept the proclamations. If I could, we've got a group from the Hospital's Mended Hearts Association, if you guys would come up, please. And Dr. Patrick Russo, famed cardiologist with Caramont Heart and Vascular, and also my cardiologist. Anywhere back here? I'm gonna read it real quick and then whoever wants to have a word or two, the mic will be yours.
Whereas heart disease remains a leading cause of mortality worldwide affecting individuals of all ages, genders and backgrounds, every year cuts short the lives of nearly 700 Americans and nearly half of all American adults have at least one major risk factor for cardiovascular disease. And whereas, the American Heart Association has been at the forefront of efforts to promote cardiovascular health, fund groundbreaking research and raise awareness about the importance of heart-healthy lifestyles, and in 2024, the AHA celebrates its 100th anniversary. And whereas, heart disease is largely preventable through education, early detection, access to good health care and the adoption of healthy habits such as regular physical activity, balanced nutrition and avoiding tobacco. And whereas, the AHA's commitment to research have paved the way for advancements in medical treatments and interventions, saving countless lives and improving the quality of life for those affected by heart-related conditions. And whereas, the month of February has been designated as American Heart Month, providing an opportunity for individuals, communities and organizations to join together in promoting the heart health and prevention awareness. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims February 2024 as American Heart Month and urges all its citizens to take proactive steps to prioritize their cardiovascular health, support the mission of the American Heart Association and work towards a future that is free from the burden of heart disease. And we will adopt this later on in the meeting during the consent agenda. And I will present this to Dr. Russo and if somebody would want to say a word or two.
Well, I'd like to. It's an honor to accept this proclamation from Commissioner Keger and the Commission. It is an honor. I accept it on behalf of the great work of Caramont Heart and Vascular and Podiatry. We have a great team in our hospital and in our offices and it is an honor to accept this. Thank you.
I don't know if any of you are familiar with Mended Hearts. We're all heart patients. We've all been in the beds there before. And what we do, we provide encouragement to other heart patients in the hospital. We make nearly 2,000 visits a year to patients in the hospital. And these are the fine folks that help out with bringing that message of hope to all our heart patients. We've been in business for going on 13 years now. So we appreciate this proclamation and these are the people who make it work. When we, we also have a program where we provide scholarships for nurses. We've given over $235,000 in the last 11 years for nursing scholarships. And we have had 139 students receive awards.
In Gaston County.
In Gaston County. Why did you get up here? Glad you're doing well.
I'm doing great.
Good.
We do thank all of you for your time served over there. Will received. I will now ask Commissioner Hovis to do proclamation of the month for 2024 in February as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could get Rose and the crew to come up?
You're too busy, Rose.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I was able to do this last year and I'm very happy to do this again this year. Whereas teen dating violence, as always, also called dating violence, is an adverse childhood experience that affects millions of young people across our country and has consequences that long last into adulthood. And whereas, according to the United States Office of Women's Health, more than 15 million children in the United States live in homes in which domestic violence has happened at least once during involving children, putting children at a greater risk for repeating this cycle as adults. A boy who sees his mother being abused is 10 times more likely to abuse his female partner as an adult. A girl who grows up in a home with domestic violence is six times more likely to be abused as a girl growing up in a non-abusive home. And whereas, females between the ages of 16 and 24 are roughly three times more likely than the rest of the population to be impacted by violence from a dating partner. And whereas, by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas, Hope United Survivors Network, the Kathy Mayberry Kloniger Center, Rose Painter, Public Health, Gaston County School Resource Officers and the Gaston County Schools have partnered to bring education to students in our community through student-led initiatives called Youth the, Youth the TH, clubs to raise awareness and recognize signs of abuse and support those impacted by violent relationships. And whereas, the acknowledgment of Teen Dating Awareness Month will benefit young people, their families, schools and communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of February 2024 as Teen Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens to work towards ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and support services they need and engage the discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention. And as Mr. Keger said, these proclamations will all be ratified in our consent agenda tonight. But ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hovis. Thank you, Chairman, and to our Commissioners and to Dr. Eagle. As Mr. Hovis read in the proclamation, one in three young people between the ages of 14 to 19 will experience some form of intimate partner violence during their youth. According to the Centers of Disease Control, prevention and education can help teens create a future without violence. One of these models of prevention is through the creation of a student-led youth club. We have started our first ever youth club in conjunction with Hope United.
I'll now ask Commissioner Hovis to lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Johnson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You please stand.
If you will, please bow with me. Gracious Father, we come to you today with your grace. We come to you with understanding and love for our fellow citizens. Father, help us to be leaders in our community, help us to meet the community's long-term needs, and help us to move Gaston County forward. Your bountiful grace and knowledge will allow us to do that. We ask that in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The February work session is now called to order. I'll now ask for proclamations, commendations, award and certificate. I'll now ask Commissioner Kieger if he would go down to the dice to proclaim the month of February 2024 as American Heart Month.
We've got some folks that are here to accept the proclamations. If I could, we've got a group from the hospital's Mended Hearts Association, if you guys would come up, please, and Dr. Patrick Russo, famed cardiologist with Caramont Heart and Vascular, and also my cardiologist. Anywhere back here? I'm going to read it real quick, and then whoever wants to have a word or two, the mic will be yours. Whereas heart disease remains a leading cause of mortality worldwide affecting individuals of all ages, genders, and backgrounds, every year cuts short the lives of nearly 700 Americans, and nearly half of all American adults have at least one major risk factor for cardiovascular disease. And whereas, the American Heart Association has been at the forefront of efforts to promote cardiovascular health, fund groundbreaking research, and raise awareness about the importance of heart-healthy lifestyles, and in 2024, the AHA celebrates its 100th anniversary. And whereas, heart disease is largely preventable through education, early detection, access to good healthcare, and the adoption of healthy habits such as regular physical activity, balanced nutrition, and avoiding tobacco. And whereas, the AHA's commitment to research have paved the way for advancements in medical treatments and interventions, saving countless lives and improving the quality of life for those affected by heart-related conditions. And whereas, the month of February has been designated as American Heart Month, providing an opportunity for individuals, communities, and organizations to join together in promoting the heart health and prevention awareness. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims February 2024 as American Heart Month and urges all its citizens to take proactive steps to prioritize their cardiovascular health, support the mission of the American Heart Association, and work towards a future that is free from the burden of heart disease. And we will adopt this later on in the meeting during the consent agenda. And I will present this to Dr. Russo. And if somebody would want to say a word or two.
Well, I'd like to, it's an honor to accept this proclamation from Commissioner Kieger and the commission. It is an honor. I accept it on behalf of the great work of Caramont Heart and Vascular and Podiatry. We have a great team in our, in our hospital and in our offices, and it is an honor to accept this. Thank you.
I don't know if any of you are familiar with Mended Hearts. We're all heart patients. We've all been in the beds there before, and what we do, we provide encouragement to other heart patients in the hospital. We make nearly 2,000 visits a year to patients in the hospital, and these are the fine folks that help out with bringing that message of hope to all our heart patients. We've been in business for going on 13 years now, so we appreciate this proclamation, and these are the people who make it work. When we, we also have a program where we provide scholarships for nurses. We've given over $235,000 in the last 11 years for nursing scholarships, and we have had 139 students receive awards. In Gaston County. Glad you're doing well.
I'm doing great.
Good.
We do thank all of you for your time served over there. Will received. I will now ask Commissioner Hovis to do proclamation of the month for 2024 in February as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Commissioner Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could get Rose and the crew to come up.
You're too busy, Rose.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I was able to do this last year, and I'm very happy to do this again this year. Whereas teen dating violence, as always, also called dating violence, is an adverse childhood experience that affects millions of young people across our country and has consequences that long last into adulthood. And whereas, according to the United States Office of Women's Health, more than 15 million children in the United States live in homes in which domestic violence has happened at least once during, involving children, putting children at a greater risk for repeating this cycle as adults. A boy can, who sees his mother being abused, is 10 times more likely to abuse his female partner as an adult. A girl who grows up in a home with domestic violence is six times more likely to be abused as a girl growing up in a non-abusive home. And whereas, females between the ages of 16 and 24 are roughly three times more likely than the rest of the population to be impacted by violence from a dating partner. And whereas, by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented, and whereas, Hope United Survivors Network, the Kathy Mayberry Kloninger Center, Rose Painter, I have a hard time with that. Public Health, Gaston County School Resource Officers, and the Gaston County Schools have partnered to bring education to students in our community through student-led initiatives called Youth the, Youth the TH, Clubs, to raise awareness and recognize signs of abuse and support those impacted by violent relationships. And whereas, the acknowledgement of Teen Dating Awareness Month will benefit, benefit young people, their families, schools, and communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of February 2024 as Teen Violence Awareness Month and urges all citizens to work towards ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and support services they need, and engage the discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention. And as Mr. Kieger said, these proclamations will all be ratified in our consent agenda tonight, but ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hovis. Thank you, Chairman, and to our commissioners and to Dr. Eagle. As Mr. Hovis read in the proclamation, one in three young people between the ages of 14 to 19 will experience some form of intimate partner violence during their youth. According to the Centers of Disease Control, prevention and education can help teens create a future without violence. One of these models of prevention is through the creation of a student-led youth club. We have started our first-ever youth club in conjunction with Hope United and Gaston Early College. And at this time, I'd like to invite Autumn Queen, she's one of our leaders from Gaston Early College Medical School Sciences, yes, to come up and speak about our first-ever youth club.
Thank you, Rose. Hello, all. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and accept this proclamation. My name is Autumn Queen. I'm a co-leader and co-founder of our youth club at Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences. Here with me today are my co-leaders and other teens from our community via Teen Action Council. What we do in our youth club is we advocate for healthy teen dating relationships, and we educate our teens in our schools and hopefully in our county on what a healthy relationship looks like, and we just spread awareness for teen dating violence. So on April 18th, we are hosting our youth summit, and what this is, is this is a big program where we're inviting all of Gaston County, whether they be adults or teens in the community, to come and learn and just be an advocate for teen dating violence. This will be April 18th at Gaston College in the David Bell Cannon Building. Thank you.
Steve, if you don't mind, if you could get with Dr. Eagle and Barry this week, and we'll get that on the TV, so we can make sure that we have any youth around the area to make sure they get involved in that.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hovis is going to read one for me as well today, the Social Services Division, DHHS proclamation, to proclaim the month of March 2024 as National Social Work Month. So if you're involved in the DHHS and Health Department and/or Social Service Division, please step up.
Whereas in 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed into law National Social Worker Month and brought focus on the social work profession dedication to improving human being and enhancing the basic skills of all people without exception. And whereas, this year's Social Work Month theme is Empowering Social Workers, underscores the critical social workers who are doing what's necessary to ensure communities, families, and individuals are safe, having basic needs met and are thriving. And whereas, the social work profession provides services outside the normal therapeutic environments, removing barriers to accessing behavioral, mental, and physical health services for children, adults, and families. Whereas, social workers have continued to support changes that have made our society a better place to live, including improving workplace safety and social safety, net programs that help eliminate hunger, poverty, and homelessness. And whereas, social workers have helped this nation to live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all through diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that respect self-determination, freedom of religion, access to education, and employment initiatives to provide pathways for self-sufficiency. And whereas, a single social worker can positively influence individuals and families to improve health outcomes, provide better care for our aging populations, help communities respond to opioid and substance abuse disorders, homelessness, domestic violence, and encourage others to become foster families, changing the life of a child forever. Whereas, and whereas, social workers are dedicated to helping others achieve successful outcomes through the removal of barriers. Now therefore, it be ordained, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by the Gaston County social workers, the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims March 2024 as National Social Work Month, and this will be adopted in our consent agenda tonight.
Most of you know I'm not very adept at public speaking, but I do want to thank the commissioners, the chairman, Dr. Eagle, all of the supports that we get from other social workers within our community you just heard from a fantastic group before we came up, but want to also extend our thanks for the community to support the work that we're doing as well. And I believe we may even have some budding social workers in the works here today. So, thank you all. We appreciate.
Before we move on, I'm going to ask the, teen dating, if you guys will have a picture in front, that way we can have something to put with our TV screen when we put it on the TV for you guys. Stay up.
Oh, I didn't hear him say that.
Picture page, picture page, picture page and your pencil.
I didn't hear what he said.
Back on up. Get a little closer to the camera. Smile.
Shoulder to shoulder.
You're on candid camera. You don't want some of them police officers in your picture?
Not particularly.
You got your lens cap on, ma'am.
Your shirt.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Nothing gets easier.
They're on order, trust me. They're on order. Certificates of appreciation and public service. It a great pleasure for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as one of the appointees to one of our many boards, our commissions. The type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in the Gaston County government and is helping shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. Christopher Waldron, Gary Williams, Child Fertility Prevention Team. Gary Williams, Community Child Protection Teams. Joel Long, Economic Development Commission. Mitzi Burnett, Alice Kovach, Conrad Polgrzowski, Equalization Review Board. J.R. Vincent, Gaston County Board of Trustees, Gaston College Board of Trustees. David Williams, Juvenile Prevention Council. Vanessa Johnson, Sarah Local Plannings. Thank you, and it has been forwarded to them. I'll now ask for adjournment for the work session. This concludes our work, our rescheduled work session for tonight. The regular meeting will convene immediately. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please refer them to Donna S. I will now call to order the meeting, regular meeting of February 27, 2024, of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. The first item on the agenda is public hearings. The commission will take citizens' comments on six public hearings. Comments will be taken on the following issues: zoning map change REZ 165, zoning map change REZ 166, zoning map change REZ 167, incentive grant for Crescent Communities, incentive grant for Project Olive Tree, and incentive grant for Project Miami. Motion to enter a public hearing, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, let me outline the rules of the procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair, and the chair shall make all comments toward him by the microphone through the comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments are limited to three minutes. All questions shall be directed for the chair for response. The chair shall rule on all points of order. Now I'll take that motion from Commissioner Warley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. All in favor? We are now in public hearing. The Gaston County Commission will now take comments on public hearings, zoning map change REZ 165, Charles Matthew Burrell applicant. Ms. Laura Hamilton, Planning 3 Building and Development Services, will provide a brief overview, and once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Mrs. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ 231122-00165 is a general rezoning from Charles Matthew Burrell for parcel ID 193896. The property is located at 3117 Ratchford Drive in Gastonia. The applicant is requesting to rezone the 9.66 acre parcel from the R1 Single Family Zoning District with the U.S. Urban Standards overlay to the R2 Single Family Moderate Zoning District with the U.S. Urban Standards zoning overlay. The subject property is located in the southeastern area of Gaston County. The aerial photo shows the subject property, which is currently vacant. This property is located in a mixed residential limited commercial area in the southeastern region of the county, where there is a variety of different housing types and styles and communities. There are several neighborhoods for both site-built homes and for both single wides and double wide manufactured homes. There is a good bit of farmland and forestry within the vicinity. The surrounding zoning districts in the vicinity include the R1, the C3, R2, R3, NBS, all with the U.S. overlay. If this request is approved, any of the uses in the R2 Single Family Moderate Zoning District with the U.S. Urban Standards overlay would be permitted in accordance with the standards and regulations of the zoning ordinance. The site will be served by private well and private septic, and it is accessed off of the NC DOT road of Ratchford Drive. This map shows all those who were notified of today's public hearing. The notices were mailed on February 9th, and the sign was placed onsite on February 13th in accordance with the general statutes. This table here shows the property owners who received the mailed notice. I have received one phone call from a nearby neighbor who sounded he was in favor of the rezoning request. The subject property is located in Area 4, the Garden Gaston area of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The key issues for citizens in this area include road improvements and better connectivity to other areas of the county and throughout the region, another bridge crossing over the Catawba River, increased walkability and connectivity between communities, continued coordination amongst local government agencies, and maintaining an enhanced quality of life. The future land use designation is rural. This designation exemplifies Gaston County and the existing natural resources that exist throughout the jurisdiction. Residential homes are located on large lots and are set back from the roads they front. It is understood that this is also the default designation for Gaston County. The TRC has reviewed this project and had no comments at this time. In addition, there are no planned transportation projects in the vicinity. The planning board heard this request on February 5th meeting and recommended approval by a nine-to-zero vote. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Any citizens, or excuse me, any comments from the applicant at this time? Please step to the board and over to the, you'll be able to give your name and address when you get there, sir.
My name is Charles Matthew Burrell. Would you like my current address?
Yes.
8417 Island Point, Charlotte, North Carolina. First, thanks for just letting me state my case. I don't really have anything extra to say, other than the good work that Ms. Hamilton in the presentation she put forth. Basically, just wanted to say that I was here, and any questions from you guys that I could answer to, you know, help this get passed.
If you would just have a seat there, and we will have anybody who was going to have a question. Let me get this, and we'll, any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? There are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing is closed. Just to recap, the planning board did recommend its approval by a nine-to-zero vote. Is there a motion to approve this as the planning board had received?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to concur with the planning board.
Motion made by Commissioner Warley, seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I will now ask Mr. John Joy if he would please provide a consistency statement.
Mr. Chair, I have the consistency statement before me. It is the same one that is in the resolution, and that was passed by the planning board. Would you like it read into the record, or would you like me to hand it to the clerk?
You just hand it to the clerk, and I think we'll accept that.
Certainly.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
The next item, the county commission will take citizens' comments on public hearings, zoning map change REZ-166. Jenny Rebecca Black is the applicant. I will now ask Ms. Laura Hamilton, Planning 3 Building and Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ 23-12-11-00166 is a general rezoning request from Jenny Rebecca Becky Black for parcel ID 157227. The address for this parcel is 5030 Jason Black Drive. It is located outside of Cheriville on approximately 6.046 acres. The request is to rezone the entire parcel. This map shows that it is just north of Cheriville's municipal limits and south of Lincoln County. The aerial map shows that the parcel is wooded with a couple of structures surrounded by residential uses. The surrounding houses are a mixture of site-built homes and manufactured housing. The majority of the homes to the north of the subject parcel are manufactured homes in the R2 zoning district. The two structures that are on the parcel will be required to be permitted, along with the home permitting, if the rezoning is approved. In order to bring them into compliance, they will be able to meet the zoning ordinance once permitted. If the rezoning is not approved, then staff will work with the property owner on all possible options to bring those structures into compliance. More information was included in your packets on this issue. This parcel also has some flooding areas on the southern end of it. The subject property is currently zoned R1 Single Family Limited. The applicant is requesting to rezone to the R2 Single Family Moderate. The abutting area is zoned R1 and R2. There is also some I-2 zoning district and Cheriville ETJ R40 in the surrounding area. This shows all who was notified of the public hearing information tonight. Public notices were mailed on February 9th, and the sign was placed on the property on February 13th, all in accordance with general statutes. I have received one phone call on this case, and they sounded as if they were in the unfavorable situation. This table here shows the property owners who received mailed notices. The lot will be serviced by private well, private septic, and access is off a recorded easement. The MPO office shared that there are no planned transportation improvements in this area. This area is in the Area 1 Rural Gaston, Northwest Gaston Small Area Plan of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The key issues for the citizens in this area are preservation of open space, road improvements, and better connectivity to other areas of the county and throughout the region, more transportation alternatives, preservation of agriculture, and maintaining the rural feel of the community, and steering development towards existing infrastructure and areas immediately surrounding the cities and towns. The future land use designation is rural. Rural communities exemplify Gaston County and the existing natural resources that exist throughout the jurisdiction. Rural areas are characterized by green rolling hills and plenty of open space, along with farmstead-style housing as well as agribusiness. It is understood that this is also the default designation for Gaston County. The TRC has reviewed this project and had no comments at this time. The planning board recommended approval of the request as presented to the R2 zoning district by a nine-to-zero vote. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any citizens, or I always change it up, any comments from the applicant at this time wishing to speak? When you get there, ma'am, if you'll just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jenny Rebecca.
Nope, when you get over there, please. Thank you.
My name is Jenny Rebecca Black, and I appreciate the commissioners hearing our request for the rezoning, and also appreciate Laura Hamilton for being so nice and helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any citizens wishing to make comment on this issue at this time? Seeing any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I will now, just to recap, the planning board recommended this approval of a nine-to-zero vote. I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. I will now ask Mr. John Joy, the county attorney. I will now ask Mr. John Joy, the County Attorney, to, will you please provide a consistency statement? Or you can just send it to the clerk after.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I'll simply note for the record that this is the same consistency statement that was adopted in the resolution and by the Planning Board.
Thank you, sir. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing zoning map change REZ-167. Ms. Linda Strickland is the applicant. We'll now ask Ms. Peyton Ratchford, Planner 2 Building and Development Services, will provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Ratchford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. REZ-23-12-15-00167 is a general rezoning request from Linda Strickland for parcel ID number 164394. The property is located off of NC 27 Highway and Iron Station. The applicant is requesting to rezone the .93 acre parcel from the R1 Single Family Limited Zoning District to the R2 Single Family Moderate Zoning District. The vicinity map shows that the parcel is located just south of the Gaston County-Lincoln County line, north of Stanley city limits.
Good evening.
The parcel is currently vacant and heavily treed on a residential street. The surrounding zoning districts include R1 and R2 which is directly across the street. There are a few parcels on C1 to the south of the subject property that are off of NC 27 Highway. If this request is approved, any uses in the R2 Single Family Moderate Zoning District would be permitted in accordance with standards and regulations as adopted in the UDO. The site will be served by utilities by a private well and private septic system. As for roads, the site is along Oak Hill Street which is an NC DOT maintained road. This map shows who received mail notices regarding tonight's public hearing. Notices were mailed out and a sign was placed onsite on February 12th, all in accordance with general statutes. This table shows the owner's information of those that received a mailed notice. The subject parcel is located in Area 3 Riverfront Gaston, Northeast Gaston as outlined in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Key issues for citizens in this area include preservation of open space, road improvements, and better connectivity to other areas of the county and throughout the region, increased job opportunities, and maintaining the rural feel of the area. The future land use designation is defined as rural center. Rural centers are those in rural communities that serve a specific purpose for the immediate area. These can be civic oriented, anchored by a church, a community center, historic churches, et cetera, or these areas can also serve a commercial purpose anchored by a rural market, small store, gas station, community daycare center, et cetera. These areas exist where transportation and communities exist to support these services. The TRC reviewed this project and there was one comment from Natural Resources regarding a stream and soil type onsite. If approved, the applicant will work with Natural Resources on these items during the permitting process. As for transportation, there are no planned transportation improvement projects in the immediate vicinity of this site. The Planning Board heard this request at its February 5th meeting and recommended approval by a nine to zero vote. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments from the applicant at this time? As you make your way over, just leave your name and address for the clerk as you get
Good evening. I am Linda Strickland. I'm the owner of Linda Strickland Real Estate, who is actually who owns the parcel. And current address is 9380 Dunwich Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina, 28056. Thank you, Ms. Peyton, for helping us with this. I really just came up here to make one correction. She said that it would be serviced by private septic and private well. It actually would be serviced by Aqua Services. That's who services the neighborhood, so I've gotten in touch with them. And I've also been working with a wetland specialist to help me figure out the whole permitting with the 404 and the 401 permitting and everything. That was all I had. I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I would now declare the public hearing closed. Just to recap, the Planning Board did unanimously approve this, nine to zero. Is there a motion to approve this as the Planning Board received? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Joy, will you please provide a consistency statement?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. And just to make note for the record, this is the same consistency statement that is in the resolution approved by the Board and that the Planning Board adopted.
Thank you, sir. The County Commission will now take comments on public hearing to approve the Gaston County Level 2 incentive grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1 and authorize the Gaston County to enter an economic development agreement with EDA with Crescent Communities. I will now call on Ms. Alicia Summy, EDC Assistant Director, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. You didn't wear the jacket tonight, we're a little upset. Ms. Summy?
I was called on that this morning. Thank you, Chairman Brown. So we're working with Crescent Communities, asking for a Level 2 grant for them. They are looking to invest $22 million in Gaston County to make substantial upgrades to a site off of Industrial Pike Road that really has just been sitting there. And they're gonna construct a 185,000 square foot facility. This facility is gonna allow the EDC to bring more prospects to the western side of Gaston County. This goes before the City of Gastonia next week. I believe it's Tuesday night. And again, this is a Level 2 grant which will be a nine-year grant.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment on this at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? If there are no additional comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion to, motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Hovis? Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The County Commission will now take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve Gaston County Level 1 incentive grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1 to authorize Gaston County to enter into an economic development agreement with Project Olive Tree. I will now ask again, Ms. Alicia Summy, EDC Assistant Director, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Summy?
Thank you, Chairman Brown. So we've been working with Project Olive Tree, which is an existing company here in Gaston County. They're actually in Stanley. They're looking to invest a little over $2 million, $2.1 million in new machine equipment which is gonna allow them to hire up to eight new employees in Stanley, which is really great for them. Open opportunities there. They've been in Gaston County since 2005 and the town of Stanley will vote on this next week at their regular scheduled council meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none from that, I will now declare the public hearing closed. Do I have a motion to approve this as presented? Motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Hovis? Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you. The County Commission now will take citizens' comments on public hearing to approve the Gaston County Level 2 incentive grant pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1 to authorize Gaston County to enter into an economic development agreement with Project Miami. I will now call again on Ms. Alicia Summy, EDC Assistant Director, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizens' comments will be taken. Ms. Summy?
Thank you, Chairman. So we've been working with Project Miami, again, another existing industry company here in Gaston County. They're looking to invest over $19 million at four different locations that they have here, substantial upgrades to their existing buildings plus new machine equipment. They're also planning to add 190 new jobs with an average salary of $54,000 a year, which is higher than the county's average annual wage. We're also working with the State of North Carolina on this project. They've seen the value in this project and they're offering a building reuse grant for them. We will go before, nope, this is just county, so it will not be going before any municipalities at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any citizens wishing to comment on this issue at this time? Seeing none, any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Can you repeat that average again?
Their average salary? The county's is right at 50 and they're gonna be paying $54,000.
Thank you. I just wanted to hear you say it out loud. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Worley, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. And I will let you know that Donna Buff did wear your blazer tonight. Thank you. This concludes tonight's public hearings for tonight. Approval of the business agenda. Are there any revisions to the business agenda or any item that wishes to be pulled? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keger? Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Approval of the minutes. You were provided a draft for the minutes for the regular meeting of 1/23/2024. Any revisions? Do I hear a motion to approve as presented? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is citizens' recognition. Our next, a portion of the Board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens the opportunity to offer comments and suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the Commission or staff to answer any questions or provide a response. Questions requiring a response shall be answered as soon as possible through the Gaston County Manager's Office. Citizens' recognition tonight will be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium and state your name and address. The first citizen signed up to speak, and I'm gonna butcher a few of these because some of you act like doctors and you sign in. Teresa, I'm just kidding. Jamie Carver? Next will be...
Come on, you can do it.
You wanna try? Mr. and Mrs. Parsons. I didn't say that. Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. Jamie Carver, 3000 Stable Gate Drive, Gastonia, North Carolina. I'm coming in regards of our community has got together on the LGI development that was built in South Gastonia area. We're county and the LGI property, they section off of city borders all our land. They raised the property approximately 20 feet and we're receiving excess water runoff from that property coming down on our land. It's affecting some of us more than others. It's increased the flow of water from there. It's turned some neighbor's property, it's turned his property from a flood plain to a marshland because you have a couple of retention ponds back there. One of the ponds, they just now shrunk by a third, either the county or city let them shrink it by a third. We received more water because of that. Settlement buildup, I think county has came out there and got on to them and they're cleaning up some settlement buildup, but we need help from the excess water and the speed of water that has increased our land. It's erosion, it's eroding our land and it's affecting some people more than others in our property. There are several people who showed up in the neighborhood. So if we could get some guidance from the Board and find out what the corrective actions that we can take and put us in touch with somebody who can get us going in the right direction, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After everyone speaks, because you are all on the same wavelength, I'm gonna send Mr. Skiba. If you'll meet him, raise your hand, Brian. After you guys all talk, he'll take you outside and give you a little more guidance on what we can try to help with as far as putting you in the right places for that. So the next will be Mrs. Parsons, and then it'll be Justin after that, and then after that it'll be Diane Babcock.
My name is Kia Parsons. I live at 3040 Stable Gate Drive with my husband. We're kind of a package deal, so, yeah. Well, I'm here this evening to piggyback off what Jamie said. We're regular hardworking people that value our homes just like anyone, but we are being impacted by the activities of LGI. I don't begrudge anyone else owning a home. I remember the excitement, the roller coaster ride that we went through, you know, when we bought our home. And we take great pride in it. It's the place that we made memories and we've raised our children and I want to protect it. What we're experiencing, we went from acres of, you know, woodland behind our home, flat woodland, to be clear. They've come through and cleared all of that and built up a berm 20 feet directly behind my home. That is causing excessive water runoff. The velocity is unheard of and we have videos of that. But what's happening is it is now flooding my land. It's not just flooding my land, my other neighbors' land. We have excessive water, water we've never seen before. It is flooding my septic tank field. Have concerns about my foundation because of the sitting water that's there. My next door neighbor who just built their home, their septic tank is being flooded regularly because of the runoff from this neighborhood. And we need help. We've had some of our neighbors come to a prior meeting, got no heads or tails. It just feels like it's the runaround. Again, we're regular ordinary citizens. We don't have millions of dollars to fight a corporation, but we do pay taxes and we need your help. That's all this evening. Thank you for your time.
Do we know if they're in the ETJ? Vincent, if you don't mind, will you go with Brian to help when they go out? That way you can sort of help him facilitate that if that's okay? Mr. Parsons, are you gonna speak or... There you go. Ms. Diane Babcocks will be next, and then after that it'd be Teresa McFarlane. You can just step over here. Accept when you're ready, young lady. You can just hand it to that young lady right there in the pink and we'll get you started whenever that happens.
I made seven copies because I knew there was seven.
Motion to accept. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
And I thank you very much. I have not attended one of your meetings, but I have seen it live streamed, so thank you for your time. My name is Diane Babcocks and I live at 3010 Stable Gate Drive. And I am also part of the Stable Gate community. And I just wanted to bring my concerns about this, it's really a detention pond because it's not built to retain water and be a pond. It's built to slowly seek out the water and then as the rain comes, it's supposed to filter it out slowly. The pictures that I brought you tonight, I took on the 13th of February, and one of the things that I'm concerned about is the safety. I don't have, there's gonna be 350 homes built behind us and there's probably going to be that many possibly children that are going to be having access to that area. And it's my understanding there's no intention, because it is not a pond, to build any kind of safety features around that. And I've already witnessed on a couple of occasions, young children going out there playing and kind of playing on the pipes and playing on the rocks, and I just worry about the safety of the children in that area. And the general appearance of it, that picture is directly taken from behind my home. So I look at that in the morning when I wake up and it appears that the erosion, and it hasn't been there that long, it's 1.72 acres, which I believe Jamie previously expressed that they have shrunk that down, but they don't seem to be keeping up with it and doing a maintenance of it, and it's my understanding that their HOA is supposed to be keeping up with that. So I'm just asking like my other neighbors for your support, for your guidance. We've had a wonderful experience in that neighborhood. It was one of the best kept secrets of Gaston County. My husband and I have been here 27 years and we've loved our home, we love our neighbors, we love our neighborhood, and it has really affected our enjoyment of our neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian, also, if you don't mind tomorrow, Teresa, do you know if they've had Natural Resources out at all? If you don't mind just letting them get involved as well with some of the runoff? Okay. Bob's also helping with that, Brian. Now we have Ms. Teresa McFarlane. After that it'd be Ryan Black.
Good evening. I am Teresa McFarlane, 1139 East Franklin Boulevard. I am also the owner-operator of Rockin Realty, Inc. The reason I'm here this evening, first of all, I want to take a minute to thank Bob and Chad because you guys, every time I've called you guys, you've responded, you've answered. I appreciate that as a citizen, so I wanted to take a minute just to say thank you because you really are a servant of the community. I sold the Parsons their house. I sold it to them. We closed. You remember when we closed? We closed 12/19 of 13. After this came to my attention, they reached out to me and said, what do we do? We don't know what to do. How do we fight this huge corporation? They're not gonna listen to us. And for the most part, most people haven't listened to them. I called, we have something that is called a legal hotline. I called our Realtor, our North Carolina Realtors Legal Hotline, talked to an attorney and was very concerned when he shared with me that this is more common in North Carolina than... that this is more common in North Carolina than we want to believe. And I have been to Lake Parson, as we affectionately refer to it now. I've seen the erosion around the Parsons home. I've seen the other effects it's had on their neighbors firsthand. And when I am someone's Realtor, I tell them, you got me for life. It doesn't matter after we're closed. If you need something, I'm still here for you. And that's what brought me back into this, because the topo has been changed, and it's negatively impacting the quiet enjoyment of the neighbors behind. And they're getting all this bad water, and I think one of the neighbors is even gonna share with you, they almost lost some livestock in the really bad rain we had a couple of weeks ago. So help these guys out, I appreciate y'all, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ryan Black. I'm gonna take a shot at this. The next one will be Mr. Dorsett? Gossett? Thank you.
So I'm Ryan Black. I am also part of Stable Gate at 2914 Stable Farm Road. So I have a 46, 45, 46 acre ranch on the backside of the neighborhood. And the LGI development separates, so my neighbors, it's my neighbor's yard, and then my ranch. Well, all of the water flow is flowing from all different points through my neighbor's yard all the way to my farm. My farm was originally, it was a floodplain, and I have about 900 yards of the Crowder's Creek River that's on the property at the back. Well, when LGI decided to break ground, I had an environmentalist here in the county and an LGI developer, and I was like, hey, you guys have, I have a covert here. Will you run your stormwater through my ranch instead of to my ranch, which is another 300 yards before you hit the river? They said, after, you know, checking it out, that there will be no impact or change to my farm. Well, I've been there four years, and the guy I bought it from, he still lives in the neighborhood. No one had ever seen any water that we are now seeing from every rain. We have water constantly flowing onto my ranch five, six days after one rainfall. And this past rain in February, January, we had over six feet of water that had submerged my entire ranch. I mean, the entire 40 something acres was about six feet underwater. We almost lost every cattle. It rushed on us so fast that we almost lost all our horses. I have about 18 horses, the cattle, everything, just, we were doing everything we could. We called the fire department in Gaston County. They declined to come, so we called Crowder's Creek Fire Department. They came about 10 o'clock at night, and they did not leave till about 4 o'clock in the morning. My neighbors brought over kayaks, and they brought me men. So I was having to kayak to my horses and pull them up to the hill, because my barn sits up on like a plateau or whatnot, to save, you know, so I at least have that safety and security. And so we've been affected by the velocity and the speed of the water that's coming to my ranch. And it should be a smooth exit for the water to go through, but the speed of the water is knocking down trees. I'm losing 15 trees every time there's a heavy rain, and it's pushing down all my debris and it's clogging the exits. The Bieber dams, this, that, and the third. And so I'm at a point where it's costing, you know, my girlfriend and I thousands of dollars in machine rental to just try to pull the sediment and the debris out of these ditches and everything. And since I'm in a floodplain, I also can't go in and redesign it without proper zoning approvals. So I can't even really get to where I need to get to due to the other, the older trees that were, you know, already standing. So I discussed some things with LGI, they declined to answer, to help, to assist, or anything like that. And right now they're sitting about 70 homes with the plan to reach 350. So that stormwater is going to quadruple, and at this point, we're just, you know, we're, you know, just trying to figure out what needs to be done. I thought about legal counsel. At the same time, we're just trying to come up with a solution and, you know, save the animals. I understand like it's a farm, and the progress is happening in Gastonia, and no one wants to get in front of progress. But at the same time, you know, we also want to continue ranching, so that's my take.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for being the movie star. I like it, y'all didn't know about that. Well, now ask Mr. Gossett to come, and then... After that's gonna be Mr... Anybody wanna help? Go ahead, sir.
Hey, I'm Joey Gossett, 3061 Stable Gate Drive. I've been out in them woods for probably about 45 years. I've never seen it do what's happened since all of those trees were taken down. Ryan also forgot to mention that he about lost his hand out there. The water was going so fast that it sucked him under, so they end up rescuing him. And there's a house that's not even two years old, and the water's going down into their septic tank from back there. And I don't know if one of them's got pictures or not, but even LGI's new houses that passed rains, three of their new houses were underwater. So we need some help out there. We done went to the city, the city's like, oh, well, it's on LGI. LGI's like, it's on the city. So we just need you guys out there to help us, because Ryan's supposed to be out there teaching horse lessons and stuff. He can't even put his livestock out there because he's worried about, you know, the infection and stuff in the hooves on all the animals and stuff like that. And that's something else that they have to do. They have to keep them in the barn, walk them up and down the road to get exercise and stuff now. So we really need some help from you guys, hopefully, because, like I said, we done been to the county, I mean, to the city, and LGI, and they're just playing ping pong. So whatever you guys do to help us, we really appreciate it. Before, there's the fatality or something, something else I want to throw in real quick. Crowder's Creek does his property, they're doing another development behind Obalo. So that's more water gonna be coming down, not only to him, but to my sister and my brother-in-law, and then the people in between them too. So something needs to be done before, you know, loss of livestock or loss of a life out there. And like I said, I've been out there almost half a century year old, and I ain't never seen it out there like that, you know what I'm saying? Never. Well, one time, when that tropical storm set out here and spun in 90, 90 something, for a week, week and a half, but it still wasn't that bad. But whatever you guys can do to get us some help out there, quit getting people to point back and forth, go this way, go that way. I mean, you guys are our only last option, not unless, you know, we all go in and get legal counsel. And I appreciate it, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. What I will tell you folks is, like I said, we're gonna provide you with, tonight with Brian and Vincent, who can help you guys seek what they do. We can't do anything from where we're side of it, but we will make sure we try to help assist in what we can do for you guys. So I hope you guys understand that we're limited to what we can do as well. They have their own board, I don't know if you've been to their meetings to voice your displeasure. I would advise you to take as many pictures as you can, it's gonna be raining over the next couple of days. So I'm sure you guys will have the opportunity to take some pictures. Pictures are worth a thousand words when you try to meet someone like our board, but our board sympathizes with you. And, but like I said, the best we can do as far as counsel, or what we can do is provide you to that. Mr. Hovis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question. The photograph that you so kindly gave us, it's dated the 12th. Does it still look that way today? That's all I need, thank you.
Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, this situation is not actually unique. We were just down, Mr. Skeba and I were down in Belmont on a community there that's River Mist, I believe is the name of that. And it's Belmont Community, but it borders folks that are in the county on Bowen Drive. And I went and visited a resident there just a few weeks ago during a heavy rain. Their backyard, just as y'all described, looks like a pond. And I think I'd shared some pictures with Brian on that. So we need to really, I mean, obviously, we're gonna work with the municipalities to hopefully remedy this, but with these developers, the situation down in Belmont, I mean, they had cut down most of the trees, and it had just created all the runoff that looked almost like that. And they didn't leave a buffer, and I don't understand why the city is allowing that to go on without leaving the buffers or leaving, or making some sort of a drainage with the riprap, something like that. And that seems like, because the folks' foundation there in Belmont, I mean, their whole patio was standing in several inches of water. Still have pictures of that. So let's do all we can, I appreciate that help.
And I wanted to add that soil and water, you know, erosion, natural resources. Also probably get Bill Ward involved, be a good time for him to help on that. But one of the things I wanted to explain to everyone what the ETJ is, is an extraterritorial jurisdiction. And with that, it has one mile outside, under 5,000 people. And if you have 10,000 people, they can extend that through the General Assembly to a two mile radius. So what happens, if you have a border limit of the city, then outside of that up to one mile would be the extraterritorial jurisdiction. So those are some of the explanations of why, we like to call it taxation without representation when you get to the world. But we're sorry, like I said, we will provide you with them. If you guys want to meet outside at some point, they can help you guys, and that way try to give you as much guidance as what you can do. But I would take as many pictures as you can over the upper couple of days. But thank you. The next item is approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda with no items pulled? Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. No items were pulled. Items pulled by majority, nothing. Appointments, Commissioner Fraley?
I've got two, Mr. Chairman. One's a reappointment to planning board, Mr. Carl Harris, Sr., and another one is appointment to Parks and Rec, Sharon Paget.
Seconded by Commissioner Keger. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Worley?
Mr. Chair, I have one tonight, child fatality prevention team. We have an application from Brandon Broome, and I would make that in a motion to appoint Mr. Broome.
Seconded by Commissioner Fraley, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Mr. Kloniger? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Hovis?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Keger? I have three that I would like to do real quick as full board, I'll do them all as one, if that's okay. Belmont Planning and Zoning, application received from Mr. Todd Kenlaw. Also Equalization and Review Board, application received by Jamie Roman. College Board of Trustees, Mr. Bill Kostarfen.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hovis. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Thank you for participating on that. Reports, Mr. Fraley?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Worley?
No reports, sir.
Mr. Kloniger? Mr. Johnson? Mr. Hovis?
None, sir.
Mr. Keger?
Yes, sir.
I will, well, we'll come back to that in other matters, we'll come back to that. I have none as well. Actually, I do. We, as a board, I know Commissioner Hovis, Dr. Eagle, and the staff. We went over to Hans Kessel for their grand opening. Alicia was there with her staff, doing a great job, and we're very proud of them. And I don't know if anybody's been over there, and I know it's obviously, they have a job fair coming up, I think, that's going on. So if somebody's looking for a job, you can go to Hans Kessel, over in the Apple Creek Business Park, it's a great facility. But I'm gonna tell you this, one of the biggest things you'll see, I ain't gonna lie to you, y'all know I like to eat, look at this right here, but we, they have, they do food items for pastas. They may have pasta with, they had macaroni and cheese, they had a little bit of everything, I ain't gonna lie. They have lobster, so if you think about the deli section, you see lobster. That's coming straight from Gaston County now, in a great facility. It's a huge mega deal over there, but I'm gonna tell you, we did some eating that day. So it was really good, so we're glad to welcome them. And the next one, we got premix on the way across the street, and we continue to fill it up, so to Alicia, you and Donnie and your staff. And we can't say enough about the things, and Ray for finding the land, Dan Zime for doing all the things, the public work to help us with all the things we gotta have. But I wanted to say something special this week. I wanted to say something, Chief Zeal, Mark Lampier, who are over our first responders. Very difficult weekend that we had with some people involved, it's our family, and that's what I want to say about. But I want to say thank you for the professionalism and what goes on in those offices, to make sure that we have that covered, we do things. And that's why we have people like you and your staff to make sure that we do the right thing. But also, I went over to the hospital to just to be there for support. And I was more, I was more outgiving to you guys than the way y'all family rallied around things that happen like this. I want to say thank you to you guys. It's a big undertaking in what we do. It's very hard, you know, Jonathan's new role at the mental health part for first responders has been a big part of that. But I gotta welcome Sergeant Matt Harris, come out here, Matt, come on. This is his induction, doctor nation to this, but come on, get on TV. But Matt is the newest security for what happens here, and we laugh because Matt's part of the family as well. But, you know, we took a little bit of a hurt this week, because one of our officers was involved in an accident. You know, when that happens, that's family. And we want to make sure we let these people know that we're here for them, and you're part of our family. And first responders go so far in what we do, from the firefighters to the EMS, to the county police, to the sheriff's office. There's so many of you that do the yeoman's work. And our group up here cannot say enough about what you guys do, so I wanted to bring that up to your attention. Are any other matters need to come before the board at this time? Mr. Kloniger?
Just briefly, I would like to talk, I received some calls from citizens about the landfill that's actually located in Dallas, and I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I had been receiving a lot of calls stating about the wait time once the trucks arrived to the landfill, where it was taking at least an hour to get in as people, vehicles were waiting bumper to bumper. And that was one issue. Another issue was the fact that all trucks were going in at the same time, including commercial and residential. And then another issue had been where, of course, with the rain and that type thing, everything had been really muddy there at the landfill. So I contacted Dr. Eagle, and she made some phone calls and that type thing in order. And so I learned today, actually from one of the callers, in that where the timeframe was taken an hour to dump. And I saw pictures of what was in there in the sale, is that now that time limit has lessened time, which the citizen was extremely happy about, in that they had separated commercial from residential. And so I think it would just be very important going forward for local business owners who are taking and dumping waste and that type thing, is for that to continue. So I wanted to commend Dr. Eagle and the other staff to help to see a change and to make a change for our citizens. That's what I have.
Well, I want to say thank you to you, because jumping on that right away with Dan and his group and doing everything, Ray, Dr. Eagle, thank you guys for doing it. Mr. Keger?
Yeah, I just, I'm not looking for any answers right now, because I don't want to just throw something out there, but maybe a manager can send us an email response on these things. One, I know we've had brief discussions on future industrial park property. I'd like to be updated, the board would, I'm sure, also. And it's been a while since we said the word "school bonds." I think that's something that's gonna have to be addressed sooner than later, because it's gonna take a couple of years to get things in a row. And I had something also that Kathy already mentioned. I was asked by a user of the landfill, why out-of-county users pay the same thing as in-county? So that's something we want to look at, I think, down the future, because there's only so much land to take all that garbage. And I think the outsider should probably pay a little more. Okay.
And I agree with you. I failed to mention that, Tom, so thank you for mentioning that.
Because I think that with Mecklenburg, especially in Mecklenburg is what I'm hearing, is that so many people from Mecklenburg is bringing in that trash. Thank you.
Mr. Worley?
Mr. Chair, I just mentioned, you mentioned the tragic incident that happened involving our law enforcement and first responders. our law enforcement and first responders, and I'm sure the board shares my sentiments as well, that there was a loss of life in that, and certainly our prayers and sympathies go out to that family as well. So just wanted to make sure that that was recognized also.
Exactly, and that's part of our family as well. I think that's what was happening. Now we go to reports. County manager.
I have no formal report tonight, but I will do a brief response to the comments from Commissioner Kloniger, Commissioner Keger. We are in the process of closing out Unit 2. That cell is almost full. That has impacted some of the wait times, but I'll be happy to do a written report on the landfill. We've already started investigating, or actually, I should say analyzing, the usage. Mecklenburg County is about 8% of our current usage, but I'll be happy to do a full-blown report on that. Unit 3 will be open in April, so that's a new cell that will also help the wait times. And then related to your items, Mr. Keger, I will provide a follow-up report. We're planning for your March 12 strategy session, and those items are a part of that conversation. So thank you for mentioning that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention for Commissioner Keger and Commissioner Kloniger, I apologize. She asked me about that this morning. If you'll put in your notes that we talk about that fee schedule during individual meetings, that will be part of the talks that you have when we do the budget process. The first-ever, Mr. John Joy, our county attorney's report.
Mr. Chair, I have no report other than I'm getting settled in. It's an honor to be here and a pleasure to be home.
Well, thank you so much for your... I don't want to say willing, sir, because we pay you to be here, but also, we're very happy that you're here, and it goes with the... Not to mention also, today, the 2023 annual report came out, and so this is a book for all you people who are running for county commissioner, people who've been county commissioners still running. This is a time for that. But I also wanted to let you guys know, the vote will be happening on March 5th, which is next Tuesday, one week from today. You'll be able to get out and cast your vote for Gaston County and the state, and also for primaries in either Republican or Democrat, whichever side you are running on. But we're very asking, we're very happy to say, please get out and vote, because it is a part of what we have to do as citizens here to make sure democracy happens in our republic. So one thing I will say, this concludes our meeting for tonight. Our March 12 work session has been canceled. The Board of Commissioners has scheduled a special meeting for the Budget Strategy Session on March 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Daniel Stowe Botanical Gardens. There's no taxpayer money going to that. Our regular meeting will meet on March 26th at 6:00 p.m. here in the Harlem B. Gaston Junior Public Courthouse. Thank you for watching, and if you have any questions, please transmit those to Donna S. Buffett, 704-866-3196. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Mr. Worley. All in favor? Good night, wasn't me. (gunshot)[1732.33]